Ready? Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of Houghton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the board's YouTube channel. Please be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. In order to be recognized to speak, please type "hand up" in the chat box. Once you've been recognized, please turn your microphone and camera on. Trustees, student trustees want, can you please lead us into the opening exercise?
Trustee.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Would you please join me in the sign? Sign of our faith, please. And in the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Most merciful God, we come to you in our weakness, we come to you in our fear. We, we come to you, we trust, for you are alone. We place before you the disease present in our world. We turn to you in our, in our time of need. Bring wisdom to our doctors, give understanding to scientists, endow caregivers with compassion and generosity. Bring healing to those who are ill, protect those who are most at risk. Give comfort to those who have lost a loved one, welcome those who have died into your internal home. Stabilize their communities, unite us in our compassion, remove all fear from our hearts and fill us with confidence in your care. Jesus, we trust in you. Spirit of the living God, fill our hearts. Amen. And in your Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Point of privilege, Chair, to be honest, I cannot hear you.
All right, we're going to skip Agenda Item 1.2 and 1.3 because we'll have to go back to that. So can I have a motion? So, so, oh, sorry. What information received? Okay, Agenda.
Everything's an echo.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time.
Not that I don't want to hear you twice.
I don't want to hear me twice. Can everybody mute their microphones, please?
Done.
I believe it's coming from the board office, Mr. Chair. Is there, do you have multiple computers open?
No, it's been, it's, we haven't changed anything. It's the same as setup as we had in camera.
You're okay now, but now Brenda's echoing.
Say something, Brenda, I didn't hear you echo.
Is somebody signed in twice?
No. I was, but not anymore.
All right, can we proceed? So Vice Chair Dort, can you please read information received in camera?
Mr. Chair, there was a motion regarding property was adopted in camera. Information received in camera, the following information was received in camera, retirements.
Trustee, excuse me, can I interrupt? So there were no motions received in camera. The only thing you can read is Agenda Item 1.3, the information, and that was what was shared by O'Hara, Executive Officer O'Hara.
Okay, my apologies, Item 1.3, information received in camera, the following information was received in camera. Retirements, Elizabeth Kobe and Mary Salvo retiring effective June 30th, 2020. Resignations, Monica Carlin and Julie Dalbarco's choir resigning effective August 31st, 2020. To you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have your hands up, your hand up?
Yes, I do. I'd like to submit a, are we on Item 2 yet, Mr. Chair?
So I haven't.
I've had some chat since 7:42 in regards to being addressed. I'd like to be acknowledged, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't hear what you said, Trustee O'Hern Zernota, could you please repeat yourself?
We cannot have a functional meeting if we can't hear each other.
I agree with you.
Very true.
So we need to resolve before we move forward.
All right, can we just take a five-minute break and see if we can resolve? We're waiting for a cue from IT.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to start again. Agenda Item Number 2, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have a point of.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Oh, you're muted.
Trustee DeRosa, can you unmute yourself, please?
Okay, everybody hear me?
Yes. We cannot hear you.
How's this?
It's fine, thank you.
Okay, let's try it again, from the top. Mr. Chair, I'd like, I'm not on muting, I'm not muting myself here.
All right, can we start again?
It skips into mute for some reason, I have no idea. So I'm unmuted now. Hands off.
I can hear you, Trustee DeRosa.
Let's try again.
You have the floor.
Let's try again. Mr. Chair, I'd like to raise a point of order regarding the motion that resulted from the Policy Committee meeting on April the 14th, 2020, under Point 5.1. And that, that motion was voted on by the trustees and passed in favor and referred to the reg, and was referred to the regular board meeting for approval. The motion in question was the following. Be it resolved.
Trustee, Trustee DeRosa, I'm gonna have to stop you there. So you have the floor, you're to speak to adding something to an agenda. We don't want to hear about your motion.
I'm getting there, sir.
The first test is to have you state the title of your motion, after which time I will take it to a vote of whether or not the trustees will vote to add it to the agenda. The vote has to be unanimous.
That's not the, that's, that is not the route that I want to take, Mr. Chair. The route I am taking is a point of order. I am at the point where I'm reading the resolution to you and my.
Which point, okay, so you have to start all over again. What point of order? Can you give me the point of order?
Mr. Chair, if I can be awarded the opportunity to finish a sentence, then it might be clearer and then we may get through this item quickly.
So you can't speak to the subject matter, you can only.
I answer, I answer, I am raising a point of order on the motion that was passed at the Policy Committee under Item 5.1 regarding, regarding the strategic, the strategic planning session. And I will read the motion for everyone's benefit.
And then I will ask. I'm sorry, you're out of order. Trustee, Trustee DeRosa, you're out of order. I'm calling you are out of order. You've not given me a point of order to be able to rule on this particular matter.
I am about to.
As such, I'm going to move on. Does anybody else have a point of order?
Mr. Chair, I am not being afforded the opportunity to be heard.
You're not following process.
That. The point of order is the following. I do not understand why this item was not included in, as an action item, in the agenda because it was referred by the Policy Committee, as it happened in the past, on other motions. So I'm respectfully asking you to put it back on the agenda as an action item. You can rule now, Mr. Chair, you can rule now on whether you're gonna do that or not. And if the answer is no, then I'm gonna take it to an appeal and take it to a vote to my fellow trustees.
I'm sorry, you can't take anything to a vote. I can take it to a vote on your behalf. I'm acting as the chair, you're not the chair, you're the trustee. So you've raised three issues. The matter came up as a discussion item in policy. The process is as follows. If something in policy, if a policy has not been reviewed, you can put forward a motion which comes to the board as a notice of motion, not as an action item. I ruled on those bases, on that basis. Had there been a report, then we could have brought it as an action item. I'm following procedures. I said that you could, under approval of the agenda, put a notice to add it to the agenda as an action item, and we will then take it to a vote.
Trustee Tomasi, my hands raised.
Trustee DeRosa still has the floor. Trustee DeRosa, have you finished?
He's muted.
Okay, so we'll move on to Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you now have the floor.
Trustee Tomasi, I am going to appeal your decision not to put this on the agenda.
Can you please provide me with your point of order?
It's not a point of order, it's an appeal.
All right, so what are you appealing, under what point of order?
There's no point of order, I'm making an appeal.
Okay, but what are you appealing to? I made a ruling, are you appealing my ruling?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like.
All right, so then say that.
For anything else.
I'm appealing your ruling to not put this on the agenda.
All right, so can you please, can you please have someone second your appeal?
I second it, Mr. Chair.
You spoke to it. Okay, so can we take it to a vote? Excuse me, excuse me, we will not take it to a vote. Trustee Guzzo.
I'm sorry, but I could not, I've asked Trustee O'Brien to clarify what his point is. Is he, he's appealing to you to add it to the agenda or not add it to, I, I don't understand if.
Yeah, so he's asking me to add it unilaterally to the agenda, which I cannot do, even though I'm chair. He can ask to bring it back to the agenda, at which time I will make a ruling.
So no, I understand, Trustee DeRosa has asked for it to be put on as an action item. I understand that piece. But Trustee O'Brien is asking for it to be added or not to be added? Can I just get clarification on that?
Yeah, he's asking for it to be added.
I thought he said not to be added.
I'm, nope.
To be added, he's asking to be added.
I'm sorry, Trustee DeRosa, I'm not asking you, I'm asking Trustee O'Brien.
I'm appealing Trustee Tomasi's decision to not put this on the agenda. I'm appealing that decision of the chair.
Okay, so I think we're all out of order here because I think he has to deal with Trustee DeRosa's item first before you can appeal that.
Correct.
So, so I just want to make sure, so, and just to go back and I know everybody, and just from trying to run this, with all due respect, we all have to be a little bit patient because when you're trying to talk and people are putting their hands up, I believe support staff are helping Trustee Tomasi to keep the order. So we just need to, because it's getting confusing, so. So I'm asking that.
I fully agree with you, Trustee, Trustee Guzzo. I would like the opportunity.
I'm sorry, Trustee DeRosa, I still have the floor. So I would just like, before I can vote, Trustee Ian Tomasi, I just, I want to understand what we're voting on right now.
So we're voting that Trustee O'Brien has asked me to add the item onto the agenda. I cannot do that without a motion. So I would need a motion that would state adding Agenda Item, give it a title, and then we can take it to a vote. I do not have the power to add it to the agenda myself.
Mr. Chair, we are not following process because I have not been able to put forward, to put forward my point of order. So if I may, if I may, if I may be allowed to finish my point of order, Mr. Chair, you will get an opportunity to rule on my point of order. And if, and then we can proceed depending on your decision. So may I have the opportunity to make my point of order, Mr. Chair?
You now have the floor.
So my point of order is as follows. The motion that was passed at Policy, under past practices, such a motion was passed and automatically would be put in as an action item at the general meeting, the following general meeting, which is the meeting we are in it now. My question is, and my, my question is, is to have that motion put back in an action item on the agenda tonight. And I respectfully ask you to rule on that specific question. Then we can proceed depending on what your decision is.
Okay, so let's back up. Trustee DeRosa, you brought a point of order, and I've asked you whether or not you wanted to put a motion to add it to the agenda, after which time I can take it to a vote and we can dispense with, you're shaking your head. We can dispense with Trustee O'Brien's asking me to appeal my decision not to have it on, or appealing my decision not to have it on the agenda. How do you wish to proceed? Can you unmute yourself, Trustee DeRosa? You're, you're speaking to somebody else, we can't hear you.
Mr. Chair, I am asking you to make a ruling on my point of order. My point of order is that the motion that was passed at Policy be put forward as an action item under normal practice. I'm asking you to rule on that. Will you put it back under the action item or not?
I will not put it back under, it's not on the agenda. The only way it can get onto the, excuse me, I have the floor. Trustee DeRosa, I've given you your option. Under Agenda Item Number 2, Approval of the Agenda, you can put a motion asking that the matter be added to the agenda. Then we will take it to a vote. That's your option.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I don't know how many, many times I have to repeat this. I want a ruling on my point of order, yes or no?
But can you please state what your point of order is?
My point of order is I would like.
What by law are you using?
My point of order, Mr. Chair, is that an item that results from the Policy Committee and the motion that was passed automatically refers to be put on the agenda as an action item as the review of the policy was.
There's no such, there's no such bylaw, so I'm gonna stop you there. Trustee DeRosa, do you wish to put a motion forward to add your item under approval of agenda? As an action item, yes or no? That's the only option you have.
Mr. Chair, I would like to appeal your ruling, and for your ruling to take a vote, and then consequences depending on the vote will ensue. Okay?
I'm not, I have not-
So that's, that's the way I would see it.
Our bylaws only allow us to add an item to the agenda by you giving notice at the approval of the agenda. The agenda, when I get to approval of agenda, here's what it says. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? If you wish to correct the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Provide us with an item that you wish-
Mr. Chair, what are my rights under a point of order? I've raised a point of order. I wanna know what my rights are according to the bylaws on a point of order.
I just stated your, your rights.
Under a point of order, from my understanding, is that I raised a point of order, you rule on it, and depending on your decision, I have an option to appeal.
Quarter nine points.
So would you please give me a ruling?
So, so trustee DeRosa, you can't use just the word point of order. You have to substantiate it by-
I have, I am trying.
No, you're not substantiating it. I need a, I need an item within the bylaws that you're attaching your point of order to.
Mr. Chair, I have been try, trying to finish my preamble to my point of order ever since, for the last 10 minutes now.
Point of privilege, I cannot hear what he's saying.
You know, I apologize for this, but, but my, uh, my system automatically turns to mute all the time.
So, Peter, Peter-
Do you hear me now?
Trustee, yes, I do. So trustee DeRosa, I initially ruled that I'm not allowing your point of order. You didn't give me a bylaw to attach it to, and I gave you a choice to add it at approval of the agenda as either a correction or an addition. Which do you like to use?
Mr. Chair, we are skipping a step. I have within my right, in the process of a point of order, submitting a point of order, the opportunity to appeal your decision, sir. I would love, I would like to have that opportunity to do that.
Trustee DeRosa, please, listen to me. I've ruled on your point of order. You're now able to appeal it, which is what I asked you to do. Are you appealing your point of order? Are you appealing your point of order? I can't hear you.
I would like to appeal your decision, sir.
So, if you appealed your decision, can you, can you tell me what it is that you wish?
Your decision not to include this motion in, as part of the action item on the agenda.
So you don't add motions to an agenda, you add a subject matter-
I would like to, Mr. Chair, I would really, we could really move on with this if-
Trustee DeRosa, you've appealed through a point of order. I ruled on it. Now, do you, do you wish to appeal my ruling? Your mic is off.
Yes, I'm appealing your ruling not to include this item as an action item on the agenda. Would you please take that to a vote, Mr. Chair?
That's what I was trying to do, if you allow me, so let's take it to a vote.
Mr. Chair, it didn't come across that way. I'm not gonna dwell on who's right and who's wrong. I would just like you to follow the process to a point of order, which is, I have made my point of order, I've asked you to include the agenda item and the motion under the action item of this agenda, right? Your ruling is no. Now, the next step is to take it to a vote. That's all I'm asking you.
And if you allow, you've said the same thing five times, so here's what I'm asking you. Can you please get a second there? So do we have a second there to trustee DeRosa, DeRosa's appeal of my decision?
I will second it to trustee O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. So I will not take a roll call.
Register vote, please.
I will now take it to a vote. Trustee Guzzo, how do you vote?
I'm still confused.
Alright, what clarification would you like?
Adding, adding it to the agenda, I've, is that what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
What? We're voting on, yeah, your appeal, on the appeal.
On my appeal, yes.
No, the appeal is mine, not yours, sir.
Whether we're in-
I'm appealing your decision not to include the item under the action item on this agenda.
Correct, but he's, he's being appealed. That's what he's making reference to. His, he's being appealed.
Alright.
Alright, so I will take a roll call. Trustee Guzzo. You do not have the floor right now, trustee DeRosa. I'm taking a vote. Trustee Guzzo.
I, I'm a little confused to all of this, so I am, I'm going to abstain at this point because I, I didn't understand the point of order. Um, had it just simply been added to the agenda, I think it might have been clear.
Okay, so trustee Guzzo abstaining. Trustee Agnew.
I still don't understand either. I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow along, this is extremely frustrating, so I'm gonna abstain as well.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
So, instead of abstaining, I'm going to be the fly in the wheel, and I would like someone, through you, Mr. Chair, to explain to me what I'm exactly voting on, if I could.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
Yes, sir.
You're voting on trustee DeRosa's appeal of my decision not to have that item on the agenda.
But for, for clarification, to get it on the agenda, someone has to make a motion and we probably vote on it and put it on the agenda, is that correct?
So then the next step would be to put it on the agenda by taking a vote, correct? You're only voting on the point of order raised by trustee DeRosa.
Okay, so if there's another way to get to it, I'm gonna oppose this one and we'll move on to the next step.
Trustee Murphy.
Uh, the clarification actually has made me more confused. So, we are voting to, um-
Override my appeal.
Okay, we're, we're voting to override your appeal. Uh, I'm in favor of overriding your appeal.
So, no, you, no, let me rephrase that. You're voting on DeRosa's appeal to overturn my decision?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you're in favor. Trustee Bambra. Trustee Dort. Trustee Carabella.
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
Abstain.
May I have a count, Mr. Chair? Two abstentions.
Trustee, excuse me, trustee DeRosa, you're out of order. I'm taking a vote. Trustee Dialax.
I, I said abstain, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
So your appeal passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, it's not trustee Caratow, you forgot to call on me for the roll call.
My apologies. Trustee Caratow.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Caratow in favor. Okay.
What's the result?
Alright, we've unraveled everything here. So, your item will go onto the agenda as agenda item. So you didn't state what you wanted on action item.
Action item, no, no, that was on, that, I, it was an action item, I don't know how many times.
Trustee, trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, we're gonna add it as agenda item number I know he doesn't realize it, I mean, we've just spent.
But all due respect, that was the, that was intended and very well explained that it had to go in as an action item. To try to say anything different or differently right now is not correct, and not right, and not fair. The motion passed, it goes added onto the action item list on the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, if you listen to what I said was, it's been added as agenda item 8.4. 8.4 is an action item. Anything under eight is an action item. Alright? So, now may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move.
Moved by trustee DeRosa, seconded by?
I move. Helena Carabella.
Helena, trustee Carabella. I will now take a, a vote. Trustee Guzzo.
And this is for the agenda.
This is for the changes to the agenda, the amended agenda.
Okay, uh, approved, I mean, in favor, I guess. As long as this gets us moving.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustees Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Dort.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratow.
In favor.
Trustee Dialax. Swan.
In favor, in favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Motion carried. Are there any declarations of conflict? There's no declaration of conflicts, there are no presentations this evening, there are no delegations. Agenda item six, minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 regular board meetings, are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2020?
Me.
Trustee Dort, seconded by? Thank you, trustee Murphy. All in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Motion passes. Agenda item 6.2, minutes of the March 31st, 2020 regular board meeting, are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, can I be recognized?
Uh, trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to suggest a revision in this, uh, the minutes of this, uh, of the March 31st regular board meeting under the resolution number 74 slash 20. I had originally voted in favor of this resolution, but shortly after I'd signaled my intention to change my vote, um, after the chair had signaled that he did not cast his vote, but I believe this fell under the radar. Um, and as such, the minutes reflect my first vote. Uh, I understand that the change won't affect the outcome of how this resolution went forward, but I would like this to be reflected. So I would like to change my vote from in favor to opposed.
Alright, duly noted. So, um, check the, um, dialogue and verify your vote, and as such, we will pass on, we will pass on, uh, agenda item 6.2. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. This is for the March 31st, um, on page two, the approval of the agenda. I just wanted an addition to, uh, it says that, um, that I made a point of order, that it should be dealt as an information item and not an action item. I'd like to add, uh, an explanation of why I said that. So to conform with current bylaw 9.6, bullet 5. Oh, as its placement on the agenda does not conform with amend, current bylaw 9.6, bullet 5. And if the chair would like to explain why he then let it go, that's fine, but I wanted my, my point of order to be clear.
So, so I'm not following, uh, trustee Carabella, um, could you please be more specific? I, I'm not seeing what it is that you're saying.
Okay, it's number two of approval of the agenda. It says trustee Carabella made a point of order that agenda item 8.3, the provision of feminine hygiene products in schools should be dealt with as an information item and not an action item. I'd like to add, to continue the sentence, to say, as its placement on the agenda does not conform with current bylaw number 9.6, bullet 5. That was my reason for, I wanted my reason.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand it. So given that we are reviewing changes, um, so after, um, secretary, um, Rosie will re, go back to the dialogue, and after we find out, we will amend the minutes as you've just stated.
Thank you, and I had one more.
Okay, go ahead.
This was just for clarification because, um, so on, it's on page, oh gosh, it's the one with the be it resolved, with the amendment that I put on, that be it further resolved, that a staff report be prepared for the April 21st, 2020 regular board meeting and include cost analysis, current costs, and an education plan. Um, here it's included as a whereas, but I myself don't remember if I made it was a motion to postpone. Did we-
So we will verify that as well.
Thank you so much.
Given that, so given that the minutes will be reviewed, and, uh, we will make the corrections based on your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So, um, we will not take a vote on, on the approval of, uh, the minutes of March 31st, 2020. As such, we will now move on to business arising from previous meetings. A, a list of outstanding items are attached with, to your agenda. So we will now, trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent O'Hara. Um, it says in the unfinished business, uh, from the November 19th board meeting, be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees further direct that the multi-year French
Trustee-
Trustee O'Brien, you're muted, we can't hear you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent O'Hara. Um, it says in the unfinished business, be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees further direct the multi-year French teacher recruitment plan include those schools identified in the delegation. I include, and may not limit to, to mention Sherwood, Bishop's, Concordia, Uterus, Quebec, et cetera. Uh, to superintendent O'Hara, I was just wondering how the recruitment plan was going despite the difficulties with posed by the COVID-19 pandemic.
Trustee, are you finished? Trustee, are you finished? Executive. O'Hara. We're just checking, trustee O'Brien, we're just checking to see if O'Hara's on the line.
Thank you. We can move on if we, if, you check in later if you want.
So, so let's suspend that, but it's been brought to my attention that we had two abstentions on the vote to trustee De Rosa's adding at the agenda. If an abstention, that counts as a vote against. As such, the vote to add trustee De Rosa's item as an action item onto the agenda has actually failed.
Trustee Ii Tomasi, how many?
Yes.
Question, how many votes were in favor?
There were, is it? Four.
Thank you.
That was yourself, trustee Murphy, trustee O'Brien, trust, or sorry, trustee Murphy, trustee De Rosa, four of you, and trustee Carabella.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, some validation of that regulation. It would seem to me that.
It's not a regulation, the system.
Mr. Chair.
Point of order, this, this item has been dealt with.
Please do me the, give me the respect and opportunity like everyone else to finish my sentences.
So you're, are you, so I haven't given you the floor, you jumped in and you started talking. So you're asking for verification on the vote. Trustee De Rosa, you voted in favor. Trustee O'Brien, you voted in favor. Trustee Carabella, you voted in favor. Trustee, trustee Guzzo and trustee Agnew voted to abstain. Trustee Duert voted opposed. Trustee O'Hern Zernota voted against. Trustee Murphy voted against. Those are the votes and it can be validated by the system.
Mr.
Murphy voted for.
I didn't vote against, I voted for.
Yes, you voted opposed.
I voted to have.
Yes, it is.
I'd have added to the agenda.
All right, so we can go back to it. So let's move on.
No, I'd like the hands up, I'd like to be recognized, Mr. Chair.
Does he have hands up?
I, as fast as I can type.
So Peter, can you please wait? She's checking to see if you have hand up. You do not have hand up, you put your hand up, but you need to put it in the box, you need to. You're muted now.
I put hands up again, is it coming through?
Really? Okay. So it doesn't matter, we're moving on, so trustee De Rosa.
May I make a point, Mr. Chair? I have.
Thanks for coming back online.
Pardon me?
Thanks for coming back online, you were talking, but we couldn't hear you.
Okay, what I would like to do is the opportunity to ask, to ask a question to this latest development, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
So it's been resolved, we've decided that the non-vote is a non-vote according to our bylaws. Robert rules says different, but if our bylaws overrule them, that's correct, that's fine. So it stays the way it is.
I think Robert's rules would take precedence and, and the act.
So, so, so De Rosa, what you're saying is that then your motion failed, because if you want Robert rules to take precedence over our bylaws.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, are we? Are we purposely looking for ways for not to get my motion approved? I would suggest.
So trustee De Rosa, please, trustee De Rosa, allow me to run the meeting. We have made a decision that the agenda item stays on. Robert rules of order say that a non-vote is a no vote. However, our bylaws state differently. We are using our bylaws to trump Robert rules. So your motion is successful. Your agenda item.
I have no more to say, I have no more to say, Mr. Chair. If it's successful, I'm a happy man. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to action items. Policy Chair trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion I-15?
Yep, just give me one moment here. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I would just like to, to, one comment is, is that I think it's so important that we respect order and process here. And that if we want to be recognized and, and speak, that we have to all follow the same, the same avenue in doing so.
So from now on, as a caution to everybody, excuse me, excuse me, as a caution to everybody, if you speak out of turn, we will mute you and we'll just continue on with the meeting, recognizing the people that have the floor. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy I-15 school name selection be approved as amended.
Moved by trustee Guzzo, can I have a second there?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. Are, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will now call for a recorded vote.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I had my hand up, I just couldn't type.
Okay, sorry, okay, go ahead, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I would like to make an amendment. I, I, so on reflection and having a week to do some research, I would like to propose another way of phrasing or expressing how to name our schools in the Catholic tradition. So if, I'd like to propose this phrase that encompasses many of the names already chosen or future names that could be put forward. Because we were talking at the policy meeting about how to express things like Sacred Heart of Jesus and Corpus Christi, things we already have. And so instead of divine Catholic symbols of faith, divine persons of the Holy Trinity, and members of the Holy Family. I can encompass that, all those things with one particular phrase. And it is persons and mysteries who have feasts celebrated in the Catholic Church liturgical calendar. So instead of all those sort of phrases, it can all be encompassed into that. And so the motion would read, there is a diocesan opinion that schools should be named after, and celebrated as feasts in the Church's liturgical calendar. Recognized blessed and saints or popes. And I did add the, so I can speak to that, or if there's somebody who wants to second that. That would be my amendment that.
Okay, any, any discussion?
I have my hand up.
Trustee Carabella, trustee Guzzo, I believe you have the floor, and after that, it's trustee Duert.
You need a second there.
Yes. You're the second there, trustee O'Brien.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So in, in conjunction with this policy meeting, we did reach out to the vicar of education and the bishop. And they've over, they've overlooked this and, and one of the, the comments that was made was that the way we've, we phrased it is acceptable. And I do caution on the fact that we make any more changes and vote on this here without consulting with the diocese again. It was something that we thought was necessary to do before the board meeting, just to ensure. And I, I, like I said, I would caution on us making any further changes. Before, without once again consulting with our vicar of education with the bishop. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Trustee Guzzo, trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment that I felt that we had spent a lot of time on this matter. Not only in a special meeting, but then also at the policy, at the last policy meeting. And I'm quite happy with the wording we came up with. So, you know, I just, I think that we put a lot of time and effort into it and worked together as a team to put that wording there. And I think the wording is, is more than sufficient the way it is.
Thank you. Trustee Vice Chair Duert, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, trustee Carabella, could you please read those words again? I did not really catch the full, full thing, if you don't mind.
Thank you. May I speak, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's, it's persons and mysteries who have feasts celebrated in the Catholic Church liturgical calendar. And I also agree with trustee Guzzo about sending it out to the, to bishops, the vicar, that's wonderful. I was actually going to say that as well, because we were making an opinion, or it says it's a diocesan opinion, and then we were adding the pope and making different phrases. So I really acknowledge that, maybe he could look over this phrasing.
Thank you, any other, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, can you please give us a written report of what the diocese, the diocese said? Because I'm not, I wasn't aware there was anything communication with them. I think I like to see that in writing, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you, do you want me to respond to that?
You have the floor, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you. So I do have some, an email that I can share, and it was in regards to the addition of pope. And it just says that everything is in order and the reference to three miracles is unnecessary. It's not always the case that one miracle is required for beautification and one miracle is required for canonization. And it happens that a pope can dispense from that. So, and if we want further background information, they would be happy to, to give that to us, but the verified miracles and other verified qualities. But the policy itself was sent to the vicar of education and consult, consult with the bishop to have a, have a look at it, because they are part of this process of the naming of the schools. We are under the Diocese of Hamilton. So, and there, they were, they saw the policy as amended and as what we've put forward as appropriate. So I, I think if we were to do any further changes, that we should offer the, what's the word I'm looking for? The courtesy of reaching out to them to explain why we're changing it further. And quite frankly, they are, there's a reason why they are, and, and like Father Con is the vicar of education. The other thing I would just say is, is, and just to echo what trustee Agnew said, we did spend a lot of time on this and a lot of thoughtful time on this. I'm not prepared to alter this and agree to an alter, alteration to this policy during this board meeting. Without a wholesome discussion, and if we are going to alter it, that changes the meaning or adds something different into it, then I would suggest we refer it back to the Policy Committee, because that's what the Policy Committee is, is, it is, will.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, thank you, trustee Guzzo, trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Okay.
I actually, we're moving down the line, I wanted to speak to item 8.3, so I will cede my place to some, someone else.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to, back to trustee Guzzo as a follow-up, can you please send us that email that you received from the bishop? I'd like to see that before I vote on it, thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you now have the floor.
Thank you through Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd be fine to send it back to the Policy Committee and really just quickly then send it off to the bishop's office with the new phrasing. I think it really does encompass a lot more. And then I think just it's worth them seeing that.
So, so do you wish then to withdraw your motion and change your motion to defer this matter and send it back down to policy?
Yes.
Okay, so we now have a, so can you formally withdraw your, your initial amendment?
Do I have to withdraw it, I just?
Yes, you withdraw your amendment in favor of sending the matter back down to policy.
Okay, I withdraw the amendment to send it back.
So now you're gonna give us your new motion to defer the matter and send it back to policy.
Because I'd like to defer, a move to defer the matter and send it back to policy for just some new phrasing and sending off to the vicar, thank you.
Thank you, so can I have a second there to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee De Rosa. I, can we take it to a vote then? Trustee Guzzo.
Sorry, can you reread, I, it cut out there, can you reread what, what trustee Carabella had done?
We're, so trustee Carabella withdrew her motion to amend. And as in favor turned to deferring the matter and sending it back down to policy. How do you vote?
Not in favor.
Not in favor. Trustee Agnew?
I'm opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
Opposed.
Trustee Brambra?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trust, Vice Chair Duert?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Kertau?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
What's our vote now?
It's tied.
So it's a tie vote, I will move it to go back down to policy. All right, policy 8.2, II-03, principal designate in schools, trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-03 principal designate in schools be approved as amended.
Moved by trustee Guzzo, can I have a second there?
Seconded.
Trustee O'Brien, is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, I will take a recorded vote, trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Brambra?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duert?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kertau?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Moving on to agenda, oh, motion passes.
I didn't get asked.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I thought I did. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Very good, so motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8.3, policy II-41, school uniform dress code, school dress code, trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Yeah, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II-41, school uniform dress code. Dress code be approved as amended and put into effect January 1, 2020. Just for a point of clarity, we've added in the, the date because it wasn't clear and it coincides with the, being put out to tender. And the contract ends at December 17. And the contract ends at December 31st, which means that the new contract would come into effect January 1, 2021. So we just wanted to ensure that that point of clarity was there.
Fine, thank you. Can I have a second there for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Guzzo. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Trustee, trustee De Rosa?
I'd like to propose an amendment.
Trustee, trustee De Rosa, please allow me to call your name. Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Through you, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion which reads as follows. Be it resolved that the policy 1141...
Whoa, 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 slowly. Slowly, we need to write it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
So be it resolved that the policy II-41 further be amended to include...
I can't hear you, trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
My apologies. The system mutes me out automatically, so let me start over again, okay? And I'll keep an eye on the mic there.
All right. Can you just talk slowly so we can write down?
I will read my amendment slowly, okay? Be it resolved that the policy II-41 further be amended to include, under the uniform vendor caption, the following. The staff will prepare in consultation with the interest groups outlined in this policy, a report to the board with their rationale and recommendation for a preferred supplier for final approval.
Can I have a second there?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. Any discussions? All right, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Again, I have some concerns that changes, particularly on a policy that we have been dealing with for months, that involves stakeholder feedback and that we spent numerous of time on and staff spent numerous of time on, that making changes at the board table without seeing it in advance or being able to have a look at it, you know, as other trustees have brought forward, it's really difficult to make decisions on the fly. I would suggest that, you know, trustee De Rosa provides some rationale as to the motion. I can't see it, so I would need to actually see it so that I can absorb what it actually says. I don't know if Rosie's capable of doing that, or if trustee De Rosa could actually just type it up in our message spot so we could see it. But at this point, I do not feel comfortable changing this motion based on, or this policy based on the length of it, the intricacy of it, and all of the moving parts that coincide with this.
So, thank you, trustee.
So, excuse me, trustee De Rosa, trustee O'Hearn Zernota has the floor.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm here. I just had a quick question. I just need some clarification on the actual policy. And I, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not quite sure how many directing it to. It might be Director Daley. As far as the committee that's produced, we have members of CAC, we have members of CPIC, and then there are individuals that are appointed. Would those individuals be considered trustees, Director Daley?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, they could be considered trustees.
And would there be a certain amount of trustees on that committee that we would feel would be a maximum?
I'm going to, through you, Mr. Chair, I see Dan Ticalix on the line, so maybe Dan, you could comment on that?
Dan, you have the floor.
And I'd like to apologize because the first writing through policy, I don't want to waste anyone's time. I just need clarification on that actual committee.
Great, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. We have had trustees on the evaluation committee for the past two RFPs that we did conduct. Typically, we look at about two trustees. We usually also call upon principals, CPIC members, and now we also look at CAC as well. The mix of it is not overly concerning to me. What I would prefer is to have an odd number of evaluators, just in terms of a tie-break type of decision if we ever came to that. Typically, for something as large as this, we would probably be looking at about seven on the evaluation committee. However, now that we've added CAC to it, I could see that maybe even moving up to nine without it really getting too convoluted and complicated, I guess, at the end of the day. But we would aim to try and have an odd number of evaluators on that.
Thank you, Dan. I guess I'm just coming from a point where it would be, you know, it's kind of different in that the money, the RFP process has a certain criteria, there's certain criteria that's to be followed, but at the end of the day, you know, it's the parents' money that we're spending or we're choosing a vendor on their behalf. So I just want to make sure there was a mix of everybody on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Zernota. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor. Trustee O'Brien?
Sorry. I want to just echo what trustee Guzzo said. I really need to see this in writing before I vote on it. And if that can be just typed in the chat section, I can at least refer to it, but thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee De Rosa, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just by way of background, because trustee Guzzo would like to understand what I think of what I heard her say, she wants to understand the purpose and the motivation. First, the nature of this decision is widespread. The decision, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The decision is also very long-term. It has a direct connection to the parents. And whether the board makes the decision or not, the board will wear the consequences of that decision because of its visibility. So what I'm trying to do with this motion is essentially give every, give the board an opportunity to ask the questions from every trustee, consider the recommendation, and just give it its final sanction. That's what I'm trying to achieve with this. I know this may not have been a process that may have been followed in the past, but I think we have an opportunity here to consider every situation as a new one. And because of the size of the contract, the fact that we're spending, we're compelling parents to spend their own money to a supplier that we choose, and the fact that the board...
Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa, just listen to me for a moment. So you will see on your screen the amended, your amendment to the motion. Could you please read it and let us know if that's what you were trying to say?
Yes, absolutely. So be it resolved that the policy II-41 further be amended to include, under the uniform vendor, the following. The staff will prepare in consultation with the interested groups outlined in this policy as a report to the board with their rationale and recommendation for a preferred supplier for final approval. And my justification for that is, I don't know how much you've got before I was muted automatically here, but essentially, the nature of this decision is such that the board will be held to account for it. The nature of it also is that we are, we are making a decision on behalf of the parents and where they have to...
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Trustee Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To echo, no pun intended, for some reason, meckling, the sentiments of those who spoke before me. I think the difference of this policy versus other policies that we have to deal with is we're asking parents to, we're not asking, we're demanding or directing parents where they have to spend their money. This is, this is the one topic that I get the most calls and complaints on. The reality is the trustees are going to have to live this decision more so than anybody else in the organization. And therefore, I think it's important that we have a final say in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Agnew, you now have the floor.
Obviously, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So obviously, being someone who, you know, way back when, brought this to the table for discussion, I'm not opposed to the sentiments behind this at all. Again, I just want to reiterate that I feel like this should have been done at the policy table. I agree that we should be reviewing the final vendor and having a discussion around that, but I just, again, caution us to continue to make amendments and changes to motions that we already approved at the policy meeting.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo, you now have the floor.
Thank you through you, trustee Ian Tomasi, I mean Chair Ian Tomasi. I just have one clarifying question in regards to this, now that I understand that the intent is it comes back to the board. It may come back to the board for approval, but this information has to come in camera, does it not? Because it involves vendor information. So, and maybe I'm not correct, but even when we talk about any of this, it's not done, it's not done in the public forum. So I'm not sure, and maybe I'm wrong. Could maybe Dan or Aaron or Superintendent Lofts address this? Trustee Ian Tomasi, I'm asking that Superintendent Lofts or Dan answer that for me.
Yeah, if you allow me, so we're going to have Dan speak to this. So, Dan, you now have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of points that we need to be careful and sort of treading water on this. When we bring this back to the board, we're essentially going to present to the board, if this does go through, the vendor that was ranked the highest through the evaluation process. Now, at the end of the day, if it is then decided by the board that they wish to not award to the highest-ranked vendor, there had better be some very good reason as to why we would not go with the highest-ranked vendor through the evaluation process. That could raise a lot of red flags, a lot of questions, and we could find ourselves in a little bit of trouble. So I would imagine that through the evaluation process, we would be able to filter out any issues and award accordingly. So I just wanted to caution on that. The second bit of it, in speaking to trustee Guzzo's question, yes, that would be in camera. It's a good chance that through this, we would be touching upon some confidential information, whether it's a particular proponent's business model, their pricing model, whatever the case may be, a lot of the information there would be sensitive for sure.
Trustee De Rosa, you have...
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay, I'll pass.
Moving on to trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I think just hearing Dan speak, probably something that we should weigh heavily, the RFP process, as we know, is the process. And I don't know that we were considering that when we were looking at this possible amendment, but he brings up a valid point. There is a process to this. The responders respond accordingly to that process. You know, the reason that it's set out that way is so that somebody can't handpick or pick and choose which vendor they give it to. It is a process that's followed and it goes to the vendor with the most points. So I think just something for us to consider.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Is there any other questions?
Yes, I put my hands up again, Mr. Chair, if I don't mind.
Yes, you do. Trustee De Rosa, you now have the floor. Sorry, I just received the notice that you had your hand up. You're muted. Can you please start again because you were muted?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add to that comment regarding the importance and the judiciousness of the decision and which I have absolutely no question about the fact that the process of the committee will do its due diligence. And I trust in my fellow trustees, their discretion and their ability to weigh the importance of this decision. So to Dan's point, his comments are well taken. Nonetheless, I think it still belongs with the board to be able to make a final decision for the reasons I've stated and others have stated.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor. Thank you, trustee De Rosa.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I understand the intent with this, but given a couple of issues, one being the groups that will be working on it will be people from CAC, parents, parents who actually have children in the system. Not all of us trustees sitting at the table have children in the system who are subject to wearing uniforms, so I don't know that we would necessarily be weighing in on something that we have firsthand knowledge on. I think staff can direct those working groups so that they are coming from different angles in regards to what recommendations are coming. And it is a set-out process, so I'm not sure, I'm a little torn with it in the sense that, you know, us giving the final okay with it doesn't necessarily change what the process is. And as Dan stated, we have to give a pretty good rationale as to why we would go against an entire working group, especially if some of us didn't participate in that working group. My suggestion would be is that, and I don't think that it's limited, I'm sure if, and correct me if I'm wrong, through you, Mr. Chair, through, to Dan or to Superintendent Lofts, whoever it may be, that should all trustees want to participate in that working group, whether it be as active participants as those appointed to it or those just there to observe, that they're all more than welcome to do that.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. So we have a motion, an amendment to the original motion by Chair of Policy trustee Guzzo. Trustee De Rosa has moved. He had a second there with trustee Carabella. I will now take this matter to a vote. So let's begin. Trustee O'Brien, are you in favor of the amendment or are you against it?
In favor.
Trustee Duert, are you in favor, opposed, or are you abstaining?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
So we have a tie, so I will...
I can't speak yet.
Sorry. Trustee Carabella, well, you're a second there, so you automatically voted in favor. So, trustee Carabella?
Yeah.
Yes, trustee Carabella, go ahead.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Peter, as the mover, how do you vote?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So trustee Caratow, how do you move?
Opposed.
Trustee Swan?
Opposed.
Trustee Bambra? Okay, thank you. So it's a tie. I get to decide. I'm opposed. So the motion fails. Moving on to agenda item, sorry, the amendment fails. So now we will go back to the policy. Sorry? Yeah, so she's gonna, so trustee Guzzo, can you please read your motion?
Yeah, sorry, just give me a second to go back to it. I just... Yep, sorry, just give me a second to go back to it, I just scroll to the next piece, my apologies. So be it resolved that the Halton Caffet District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy II dash four one, school uniform dress code, school dress code be approved as amended and put in effect on January one, twenty 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 one, twenty twenty one.
Second? May I have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Agnew. I will now take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dort?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee, uh, Trustee Karata?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Motion passes. Thank you. So moving on to agenda item, which has been added on by Trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa, can you please speak to your motion?
Mr. Chair, I will read the motion, be it resolved that the Director of Education initiate Phase One of the Strategic Action Plan to review and validate the Board's mission, vision, and value statement, and establish a Strategic Planning Steering Committee.
Can I have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
I was just gonna say to, to, to read it again, please.
Trustee DeRosa, can you please read the motion again slowly?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Director of Education initiate Phase One of the Strategic Plan Process to review and validate the Board's mission, vision, and value statements, and establish a Strategic Planning Steering Committee.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, thank you for your motion. Can you now speak to your motion and tell the board why you wish to move ahead with a multi-year strategic plan process? Since this particular item belongs to trustees, you have stated that you wish the Director to begin the process. The process technically begins with trustees by giving direction to the Director. As such, please provide us with insight as to why we should move, given the uncertain times, given the fact that the faith component of our multi-year strategic plan is on hold, simply because we cannot fulfill the, the sacraments.
Point of, no, point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair, that if this is the same motion that was proposed at the last policy meeting, I don't believe that's the actual motion.
Uh, it has changed, it's an amended motion. You're absolutely correct, uh, Trustee Guzzo. So I would ask Trustee?
So may I speak to that, Mr. Chair?
Excuse me? I, excuse me?
I'm under the impression that it is the same one. We should take the opportunity to verify that.
Trustee DeRosa, you're out of order. I'm not gonna tell you again. So if you allow me to finish, can you please verify that that is the motion that you read at the Policy Committee meeting?
Mr. Chair, I would ask, uh, this is a verbatim motion, I'm under the impression that it is exactly the same one. I would ask Rosie if she could verify that. Because there was no changes to that motion.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, I don't mean to speak out of turn, I just, I don't have the minutes on me, and I would have to go back to see what it actually said.
Yeah, we're just searching, we're, Trustee Guzzo, thank you for bringing the matter up. We are now trying to pull out the motion as it was read in policy.
Let's see if I can.
You don't have the floor. Can we, can you just give us a moment to search and ensure that?
I will mute myself, Mr. Chair.
Just give us a minute to search out, to see and verify that the motions are the same.
Absolutely.
If they're not, then we have to do amendments. Thank you. Now I'm nervous that I don't. Can I read it? All right, give me the, give me the floor. Uh, Trustee DeRosa, I will read you the motion that was given, read by you in the Policy Committee. Resolve that the Director of Education initiate Phase One of the Strategic Planning Process to review and validate the Board's mission, vision, and value statements, and establish a Strategic Planning Steering Committee. Is it the same? Okay.
Yes, it is.
So it's verified that it is the same. So now can you speak to your motion?
Um, thank you for your, uh, for the opportunity, mister.
You're muted, Peter, can you unmute yourself? I'll just keep this for a minute. Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, please allow me.
Peter, I, I, Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, are you there?
I'm here, yes.
Okay. So let me, let me turn the clock back, because I don't know how much, how much, um, thank you for your preamble and set, and setting the stage, Mr. Chair. I'm simply motivated with this motion to get the staff to give, uh, a Director Daly to go ahead to start putting things in place and start the process, because it's, will be a long process. And to the point that you make regarding the ministry, uh, waiting for the ministry to give us direction, I think whatever direction we get to the minute, from the ministry can be adjusted accordingly. So Phase One, Phase One can proceed, uh, without, without worries. Um, and, uh, I think we've, it's incumbent upon us to, to effectively get, give them the go ahead to start this process. Uh, I don't understand why we would want to delay it in any way, shape, or form.
So, uh, Trustee, is there any other discussion?
I have my hand up, and I think Trustee Murphy has his hand up as well.
So, Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, I think Trustee Murphy was before me.
Was he?
Thank you, Trustee.
All right, so thank, so I, I just get given papers here, I don't know, I, I don't see who's up.
I'm giving the floor to Trustee Murphy.
Trustee Mo, Murphy, Trustee Agnew, has yielded the floor to you.
That's, uh, very gracious of Trustee Agnew, as always, I would expect nothing less from her. Thank you for your editorial, Mr. Chair, on the matter, notwithstanding your editorial comments, uh, it's something that, uh, most of eight of, uh, the trustees voted to move forward to the board meeting to start this process. It's a multifaceted process that's gonna take a long time, draws on a lot of resources. Over that time, yes, I agree with your point, there, we're in a dynamic world, but we're always in a dynamic world, things will always change, and I'm sure the process allows for those changes to be incorporated in it. I don't really see the advantage of waiting and not starting the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Can I, Trustee Agnew, you now have the floor, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, perhaps I could ask Director Daly, um, his comments on this, where I feel like we're speaking on behalf of, uh, the Director of Education as far as what we are directing him to do, and understanding that that, um, is, uh, a responsibility of ours, but I need, you know, perhaps Director Daly would like to comment on, um, whether, you know, this is something that he needs us to provide for him right now as far as direction.
Well, through, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I actually do need, uh, the Board of Trustees to initiate, uh, it through a resolution, that's what our policy says, our current policy. Um, I think, um, again, if we look at what we're looking to do in the first phase, it's really to review our board mission, vision, and values, put our steering to committee together, and look at some timelines, I think we can probably achieve that before we close the school year. Uh, the real bulk of the work will come, uh, next year, um, but I, uh, the policy does state that the, the, uh, the process needs to be initiated by board resolution.
Great, thank you very much.
Trustee, um, Vice Chair Dort, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I have a question here, uh, question to Secretary Daly, what are the drawbacks of, uh, starting the plan now? Are there any drawbacks, given the situation which is continuously changing? And, uh, are we expecting any changes to come, uh, from the ministry during this point in time?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not expecting any, um, I, I think that, um, uh, other trustees have, have heard that there might be changes coming, I haven't heard that, um, so, so I can't really speak to that. Um, I don't think the process in and of itself, uh, needs to change in terms of what our current dynamic is. Certainly in the first, uh, in this first stage, we're really looking at validating either, either, uh, going forward with our current mission, vision, and values, or amending that. Um, the next part of the process, once we've established the steering committee, is really to start to do an internal scan, uh, and then an external stance, we're gathering data, that's not gonna change. Certainly the internal data that we're gonna gather is really not gonna change markedly, um, based on what kind of our current situation is. In terms of changes that the ministry may make around curriculum, um, a, a, again, the strategic plan, uh, really sets our, our overarching priorities going forward for the next four years, as opposed to a specific, um, ministry implementation. So I, I don't see any downside to initiating the process now, and based on, uh, kind of where we're at in, in terms of the school year, uh, we're a little bit limited in terms of how far we're gonna get by June, regardless.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I have a question of, um, Director Daly. Um, so the last two multi-year strategic plans that this particular board has produced, um, required five phases. Are we going to be using the same template as we've used in the two previous multi-year strategic plans? Uh, and if so, can you provide us with specific guidelines? If we're not using the twenty oh nine, twenty eleven template, then if we're using the twenty seventeen template, can you please provide us with how many phases and the timeframes to deliver each of those phases? And the total duration of, uh, the multi-year strategic planning process?
So, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, thanks for that question. So, um, when I gave the overview on January twenty first, I think it was, um, it, we did go through an overview of the process. Um, so in, under the current policy, uh, the five stages are really combined into four stages. Um, so what's covered off in the twenty seventeen guideline, uh, is still in the current policy. Um, in terms of a, in terms of timing, I would think that Phase One, which again is reviewing the mission, vision, and values of the board, establishing the steering committee, and then the steering committee establishes timelines, uh, I think we could get that done by the end of June, uh, and I would suggest that we could use some time in policy to do that. Uh, the Phase Two stage, which is really the gathering of data, identifying stakeholder input, determining how we're gonna consult, carrying out the consultation, is really the bulk of the work. Uh, I would say that we could probably do that between September and December or January of next year. Then Phase Three's actually gathering all that information and starting to lay out the plan. Uh, I would hope we'd be able to get that done in, in the January to April or May timeframe, and to have the strategic plan completed and passed by the board by May of twenty twenty one.
Okay, so, um, I have a follow-up question, but before I give you the follow-up question, so the current, um, template that we've used has five phases. The first phase was preparing to plan, which is separate from gathering information. The second phase is setting the content, that's where we sit down and decide what it is that we want to achieve and strive to. Phase Three is the formal stakeholder consultation, that's a short process. And Phase Four is you develop the plan. Then you ended off with Phase Five, which is the alignment and, um, implementation. If we're looking in terms of the timeframe, the old timeframe used to be essentially nineteen months, we're now, as what, um, Director Daly said, we're going to build that into the current multi-year strategic plan from twenty seventeen, the guidelines, which by the way, they're not guidelines, they're what we need to subscribe to, because they're backed by law and, and the Education Act. Um, how are we meeting these timelines by combining, by taking away one of the phases? So perhaps what you can give me is how you're preparing to plan, setting content, formal stakeholder consultation, so give me a specific time on how we're going to do that.
So once again, I'll take you back to the January overview I gave you. So Phase One, under our current policy, is now titled Getting Organized in Phase One. We validate and update the Board's existing mission, vision, and values through board resolution. We strike the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, the Strategic St, uh, Steering Committee determines timelines to go forward, again, through board approval. Uh, in that particular phase, trustees also decide whether they want to, uh, use a facilitator for any part of the process, that's done through board resolution. The next phase, under our current policy, is called Gathering Information, so that's when we gather data together. We identify stakeholder groups, we go through the consultation process, and in fact, that's not a quick phase, the consultation process does take time, depends on how you do that consultation, um, but that's really where we're asking our stakeholders for their input. And that, you might argue, that's one of the most i- important parts of it. Uh, I would think we'd be able to get that first two phases completed by December or January of the next school year.
Okay, so I, I don't understand, I'll tell you the reason why. In the old, or in our current template, which is backed by Policy I forty four, Phase One started, starts from June to March, which was a nine-month process. Phase Two, Setting the Content, started from March twenty fifteen, or going into twenty fifteen, to August twenty fifteen, which was a seven-month process. Phase Three was a three-month process, and that's the formal stakeholder consultation. Phase Four, uh, Developing the Plan, starts November to December, which is only a two-month process. And Phase Five, the Alignment and Implement, Implementation, is a nine-month process. So if you, if we follow your guidelines or your timeframes, you're saying to me that we can start the process March, or sorry, April twenty twenty? So where do we, how do we get to the rollout? So the rollout would have to be twenty-four months later. Um, we're behind by, let's say, now we're almost a year behind, how do we catch up?
Well, I, again, through you, Mr. Chair, I think I just explained where we can, um, and you, you can shrug your shoulders, um, but I, I, I did explain it. Uh, I think what we're doing is following the policy that we I think what we're doing is following the policy that we have now. So we're not following the previous template. We're not following the 2009 template. We're trying to follow the policy as it's outlined currently. We really should have initiated the policy in January, but we can make up some of that time. I'm confident that, knowing our group of trustees, that we can do a good job on this and have it completed in time for the end of next school year.
Okay, but I'll go back to my original statement. The current policy that we have is built on five phases. The five phases lasted a total of 19 months. If you're now saying that we're moving to the guidelines from 2017, which we did not follow because our current strategic plan started in September 2016 and the guidelines came in in 2017, how do we... Or do we not have to change our policy to fulfill the mandate of the organized... Oh, sorry, of the guidelines provided to us by the Ministry of Education, which are legal and binding?
Through you, Mr. Chair. They are guidelines. The 2017 guidelines that the ministry produced, in fact, our board was one of the boards that submitted information to that process. Our current policy, so the policy that we're currently operating under now, has four phases. I would argue that the current policy includes all of the major components of the trustee guideline. The five phases combine into four phases.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order. I just need clarification. I think we're breaking a bylaw, by like 10.12, where if the chair is taking part of a debate, you need to pass the gavel to your vice chair.
I'm not... This is not a debate. I'm entitled to ask questions of the director, secretary, at any given time, along with any trustee, for both clarification and input. I don't... I'm not required to pass the gavel.
Okay, so let me just read the bylaw. This is germane to the conversation. Should the chair elect to vacate the chair to take part in any debate or discussion or for any other reason? The chair shall call upon the vice chair in the vice chair's absence, one of the trustees. So I really think you're taking part in the discussion.
Trustee O'Hern Zernata, I'm not vacating. I don't need to vacate. I'm asking clarification questions, which I'm entitled to. So I do have the floor. Thank you. I will continue. So I've canvassed many boards, and most boards have decided to put their multi-year strategic plan review on hold. I spoke to Chair of Hamilton Wentworth, and who also happened to sit on the committee, who wrote the organization and the ministry guidelines. Here's what he said to me. "Hi, Vincent. Hope you are doing well. Others may think differently, but I do not believe now would be a good time to begin the process. I say that out of appreciation for how important the process and the results are to the school board system. I say that as well because of the uncertainty with regards to when schools will reopen and the differing individual and collective priorities brought about as a result of the current crisis. If the plan... If the process is already begun and most of the consultation is happening virtually, perhaps that could continue. We are hoping to finalize our prior to the end of the year... Ours prior to the end of the school year in light of the current priorities. We have not yet discussed the next steps. I was on the committee that developed the 2017 document, but I'm not aware of timelines for an update. I will follow up and see if I can get further information from the ministry. I've made my case. The decision is the board's decision, not mine. I've just given input of what my feelings are based on my research and based on my discussions with probably 11 different boards. Thank you." Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may respectfully suggest that notwithstanding all of the detailed work that you have done in this, to try to maybe delay this a couple of weeks, three weeks, may I suggest that we start to take a look at the forest from the trees and give our director the leeway to go do his job? And this is really what we're trying to do here. If we're anticipating, if we're giving him... Happened to be giving him a few extra weeks to get started, to me, that sounds like a benefit. That doesn't sound like something that we should be withholding from him. So this motion is just about giving him the authority to proceed. I think all of the analysis that you've done is commendable. It may be appropriate and will result from discussions once the committee gets going. So respectfully, in the interest of time, I would suggest that you take this issue to a vote.
So Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you with all due respect. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm really trying to listen along to what you're saying, and I appreciate the fact that the chair of a different board, the Hamilton Catholic... Hamilton Wentworth Catholic District Board has sent you that email. Knowing what his position is in sitting in sharing bargaining, and I would suggest that if he has a position, that he would send it out as an official position and not just as an email. And I guess that's my question to you. Is he sending that out to you as just a conversation piece? Or is he sending that out as it's his official position and he's going to send it out as someone in his capacity, as chair at Oxta, to, you know, for all of the boards and suggesting that all of the boards do the same thing? If not, I think, you know, we should really move on with this.
So Trustee Guzzo, it doesn't matter in what capacity he wrote it. I reached out to him to get input from the perspective that he has been through it many, many years. He knows the process, and I thought, what would be the best thing for us to do as a board? As I said, the decision is not mine. I've provided you with my observations and my research. I can take it to a vote if nobody has any other questions. But I see that I have Trustee O'Hern Zernata that's on cue. So Trustee Zernata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I hate to belabor this, but I must appeal that decision that you should have passed the gavel during that point. That is considered a discussion. That was a very long attention, not listening. You were speaking at the same time. So I'm looking for support. I would like to appeal that decision and follow the appropriate process.
So do you have a second there?
I will second that.
All right, seconded by Trustee O'Brien. A vote now? Trustee De Rosa.
I move to move on.
What's the... What's the appeal vote on?
That I should have passed the gavel.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I agree.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
What are we voting on about opposing your... Can you clarify again?
That I should have passed the gavel.
To me?
For you to discuss.
Sure, in favor.
Okay. Guzzo, Trustee Guzzo.
At this point, it's a mute point, so abstaining from voting. If it had been done in a timely fashion, it'd be a different story.
Trustee O'Hern Zernata.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Caratelle.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Okay, so what would you like me to do? So you've asked me to pass the gavel. I didn't pass the gavel. So what do we do now?
I would just like it to be on record that we're talking about being following rules through many of our meetings, that we need to keep ourselves accountable. And next time, we will follow the rules. I'm asking for that consideration to be made in the next situation.
Okay, so we still have...
I'm sorry. Could I speak a little bit more? I just wanted to follow up to Mr. Trustee Guzzo's point. I didn't do it as Tommy because I was trying to respect someone speaking to an issue and not, you know, talking over them. So I did the best I could by putting my hand up and getting it addressed in a timely manner. So that's my...
Thank you, Trustee O'Hern Zernata.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So now we're going to take it to... Oh, Trustee De Rosa, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Can we move on to vote on the motion?
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
I don't get an answer.
Withdraw my hand.
All right, so let's take it to a vote. It was moved by Trustee De Rosa. It was seconded by Trustee O'Brien. There's no more discussion. Trustee De Rosa, how do you vote?
In favor of the motion.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernata.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Caratelle.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Unanimous. I'll even vote for myself.
I didn't vote.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew. In favor? Unanimous.
Yes. Trustee Carabella. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Trustee Carabella, you didn't ask my vote.
Oh, my, sorry. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Staff Reports. Trustee Cipriano, can you please provide the board with your report?
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I present the staff report around the feasibility of expanding the alternative education program. This staff report is a result of a motion of the board that was passed in response to a February 18th board meeting presentation on the success of our current alternative education program. As you know, our ALTED program supports our students who struggle to attend or achieve success in their home schools. And typically, their lack of success is due to some form of complex mental health challenge or life challenge. Currently, we serve 38 students in our ALTED programs in our Milton site and our Oakville site. We surveyed our secondary schools for this report to see if there were students within our regular day schools who may benefit from an alternate program that were not currently in the program. The results of the survey are in the report as part of an appendix. What we found is that as we continue to build the capacity of all of our staffs around supporting students with mental health through such thing as trauma-informed pedagogy, some of our schools take part in hand-timling for these students with mental health challenges, increased social work and child youth counselors in our schools. We have more and more students with low-level challenges that are able to stay in their home schools and achieve success in their regular home schools. Students whom in the past that we would have probably referred to our ALTED programs are now thriving at their home schools with the right supports in place. So we're really proud of the work that we've done in this area. But having said that, we still have many students with complex needs that do benefit from the increased mental health support, the small ratios of adult students in those classes, and the unique individualization of the ALTED programs. As you can see from our conclusion, it's our recommendation that we add an additional alternative education classroom to support the increasing number of students who require this type of environment to learn while supporting their well-being and mental health challenges. I am happy to report that we discussed this recommendation at our senior table, senior staff table, and you will see this additional class reflected in our new initiatives for next year when that's brought to the board at a future meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Would this report go to the SEAC committee, or do they know about it? I haven't been able to attend.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, this was not brought to SEAC. This is a staff report that would come first to the board meeting. It wasn't... It was not suggested that we bring to SEAC. However, having said that, once a new class has been approved through our new initiatives with the board, we would bring that information to SEAC. And if you recall, the original presentation around alternative programs, it was initiated at SEAC. It was a presentation at SEAC that was requested to be brought to the board. So SEAC is well aware of our ALTED programs and the good things that they're doing in our schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing there are no other questions, we will now move to Agenda Item... You guys want a five-minute break?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I guess.
No.
If the... Trustee...
No.
Sure. I mean, let's be cognizant of the time. It's 9:37 already.
We don't need a break.
All right, let's take a quick five-minute break.
No.
So hang on, let's... Do you want to...
No break. Okay.
So we have three people that have voiced an opinion to take a five-minute break. The rest have not voiced their opinion.
No break.
No break.
Keep going.
Okay.
That's two.
No break.
No break.
Three. One more.
No, no.
You got four votes there, O'Brien.
If you want a break, just mute your microphone and go over break.
That's right. Thank you. So we will continue. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Information Items 10.1, Trustee Swan. Can you please share your report with the board?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So for the past few weeks, we've actually been really busy, even despite the closure of schools. And I was actually asked to do a lot of work with Oxta ECO, in particular, with translating their equity survey into French and then distributing it to Francophone schools through our other Student Trustees Association that represents Francophone school boards and student trustees from those boards. I've also been asked with helping to provide feedback for the French portion for the Ontario Physical and Health Education Association Learning Project, or OFIA. From what I understand, this is a bilingual project, so both English and French, that are intended to help both Anglophone and Francophone elementary and secondary physical education teachers during the duration of this pandemic. And I believe it's supposed to provide some activities that students can do while they are at home. As for the timeline, I was supposed to receive this consultation package a couple of weeks ago, but this has not happened because of delays in translation. So I hope to provide feedback by the end of the week, which is April 20th to April 24th on this project. As well, I've been trying to figure out how to tele... Kind of focus that conference, the French Relations Conference, which was originally scheduled in early April, but now is scheduled to be held online in early May with other student trustees who are currently taking core French, extended French, or French immersion courses or streams. For, under the pillar for believing, the Ontario Student Trustees Association's Catholic Board Council, we've concluded that Tunis for Tuition Charity and Support are making Catholic education financially accessible to all Catholic students across Ontario. Unfortunately, because of a lot of the disruptions, we weren't able to get it out to our Student Senate on time to try to promote this to their schools. From April 60th, Holy Week took place at Halting Catholic District School Board, but the celebrations within elementary and secondary schools were unable to proceed due to the crisis. St. Thomas Aquinas Assumption and Jean Vanier Student Councils proceeded with their Holy Weeks nonetheless, online with the help of their chaplains. Via Twitter, Instagram, and other social media platforms, secondary and elementary schools throughout the board have been sharing scriptures, motivational messages through our faith to support families that are dealing with this pandemic. And so, under... And also under the pillar of belonging. So as you may have or may have not heard, the Oxta ECO Annual General Meeting has been canceled. This is because of the crisis and for the safety of the participants. All of us, six incoming and outgoing student trustees, were meant to attend. And so in lieu of that, online professional development will be provided in the conference instead. We will have our elections for our Oxta ECO executives taking place... the conference. Instead, we will have our elections for our AUSTA ECO executives taking place in the first week of June. We also had a call with our incoming student trustees last Tuesday regarding kind of discussions about changing the policy. I dash 26 student trustees on the, on each DSB. And in consultation with them, we were trying to develop a plan for the policies to try to propose and promote them. I guess more info will be provided soon. As well, we've been working on our student senate constitution for the past few months, and student trustees have drafted and edited, as well as revised it with the help of the incomings. And we will send that to our student senate advisor, Loyola Vice Principal Ms. Ellison, for eventual review and ratification via student by the end of this year. And finally, Trustee Carraway and I had attended another AUSTA ECO Catholic Cabinet online meeting. And this really centered around issues regarding distance learning, school closures. We've also been hearing from our student trustees that there's a lot of discrepancies with regards to marking and midterms. There's also some, I guess, discrepancies in terms of the course content from either last, or not discrepancies, but inequities from last semester classes and this semester. So that concludes the end of my report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Oh, Mr. Chair, you're muted, but I have my hand up.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Trustee Carraway, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that report. I guess two things caught my attention was you're, you said you were going to discuss some changes to the policy I dash 26 student trustees. So is that going to be coming to our policy committee before the year's over?
Um, I believe that's the plan. We've, we're trying to work out the details before our next policy committee meeting, which will be held in, I believe it's May 12. So we're trying really hard to get this done, but if not, then we would, we would hope to do it, or we would pass it on to our incoming student trustees.
Okay. And then my second question was, may I ask my second question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, follow-up question.
Thank you. Was without this last, the Catholic Cabinet you attended, were there any proposals to address some of the concerns that were brought forward and that you talked about? Were there any ideas to how to solve those issues brought forward?
I think that a lot of it, I think from what I've seen, I think it's, it's really, so first of all, I think AUSTA ECO has been working with the ministry to try to clear this up. I guess I'm perceiving that there might, there might be some discussion about that, just because there isn't really, the guidelines right now are somewhat vague. So I think they're, they're trying to work on that as well. But it really depends for each of the other boards, and we're trying to communicate with other student trustees to see what's going on with them. So as of right now, we don't have a strict plan in terms of how we're going to address those, those issues. I believe that those issues will come up later this week.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing there are no other questions, I'll move on to agenda item 10.2, 2020-21 Budget Consultation Survey. Dr. Colomore and Aaron will speak to the budget estimates as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Through you, Mr. Chair. Before I use the information report on the budget consultation survey results, and it's really to provide trustees with a summary of the feedback that we gathered from the survey. The survey was in the field back in February. We got just over 1,000 responses, so 1,101. Most of those respondents indicated that they were parents or guardians, and most of them also said that they were from the elementary panel. The report and the appendices attached actually has a summary of all of the, the results from each of the questions. And Zoe and I are both here to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Questions? Trustee Vice Chair Dort, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Colomore, for your parsing of the data. And I think we had really good responses, and I'm very proud about Milton especially, with 90, up to 96% satisfaction. However, there are a couple of areas which, which, which parents and students have consistently talked about. And one area which I'm really concerned is the use of washrooms, sanitation in washrooms. And so I myself happened to visit BR washroom, and it was terrible, quite frankly. I could not believe the, you know, the kind of washroom I was in. And so I, I empathize and I understand where the students are coming from. So that's one area I'd like to talk about. Second thing is, another thing that came out was about STEM programs. And we talked about it in the past board meetings, and it's something that's resonating here. That's a point to note. So once again, regarding the washrooms, how do we intend to take the data that we have so meticulously collected? And how do we plan, and how, what do we plan to do to kind of mitigate it and make sure it does not happen in the next survey? Next survey, we want, we want this item to be gone. So how do we plan to, to deal with this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to refer to Superintendent Merrick, if he could answer this one.
Yeah, so I see some of the comments there as well. It, you know, one of the important things to note, that only 50 respondents total out of the 2,300 or so students that attend Bishop Reading put in comments for this. And as well, everyone gets to select one of those things. And, you know, on one of those issues, and it seems like about two-thirds picked the washrooms. With that said, I would say that, you know, we do have that number of students in a building. The current building is built for 933 students. We have over 2,000 kids attending that building every day. We do do our best to try and keep the washrooms clean on a regular basis, but knowing how many students we have there, it is an ongoing challenge. With that said, we do know that we have the new addition opening as soon as we can resume construction. Our plans have it open for September. We're about doubling the number of washrooms in the, in the facility. So that's gonna make a vast improvement just in the number of, of uses in those washrooms. And it'll translate into the fundness of them as well, just to the, the reduced traffic in those washrooms.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up question, please.
Trustee Dort, you have the floor. Sorry, I was muted.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's precisely the same thing that, that's what Lieutenant Merrick is talking about. Yes, it's not only BR, it's pretty much in all the schools. And I've kind of made note, the, the washroom seemed to be one of the main items and an issue with all the schools. It's not only BR. No doubt, BR is an issue right now. And even though it's an issue right now, we need to tackle it for next year. Because the same problems are going to persist for next year, same with JV. Because we have more number of students and there's no third school coming up. So, so exactly, how do we intend to mitigate this for next year? And how are we planning? Is, are we allocating some kind of budget? Did we talk about this in, in the past? Or is just going to continue for the next year?
Oh, I mean, the, the budget thing would be up to yourselves, but as far as opening new washroom facilities at BR, that is one of the tactics. So we know that the school was overpopulated the way it is now. And we're almost doubling the capacity of the schools, or adding about 630 or so people places to the school. So that is one of the big initiatives that I've been working on for a long time, to try and resolve the, the access to washrooms at, at Bishop Reading. I'd also say Bishop Reading and Jean Vagnier, we both have extra custodial staff crew there during the day. So one of the things we do to try and keep the washrooms in better shape there, knowing we have so many students there, we actually have extra crew there. So most of our schools only have one-day custodian. We have two at those schools, as well as a cafeteria person as well. So we have extra staff there working on those, on those issues.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Colomore, for an excellent, excellent presentation. This question is to Superintendent Loffs. Aaron, it does say was one of the subthemes that, to reassess school and board's staff positions, including eliminating certain positions that are not deemed necessary. 37 respondents, some comments like decrease the number of consultants and itinerants. Are so many consultants at the board level really necessary with the money used to set better positions, offering class support? So Superintendent Loffs, can you, this, this theme comes up a lot. It came up in last year's budget survey too, and I don't know if it's ever been addressed. Can you tell us what percentage of our budget does go to staff salaries?
Percentage of our budget in total that goes to staff salaries? Trust, sorry, through you, Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, about 85% of it goes to staff salary, but that's just not for itinerance. And that's for everybody in our, our system. So the majority of our budget is for staff salaries.
I'm thinking, I think you have board office staff. It seems to me that this comment, these comments address staff at the board office. And this is the one that keeps reoccurring last year, this year. Can you please give us the idea of how the people at the board office, percentage of our salary that goes to non-teaching staff there?
I'm sorry, I don't have that in, in front of me right now, Trustee O'Brien. What I can mention though, was there was a, a lot of changing of our, I guess of our staff complement last year as a result of our budget challenges. So even though it might have been mentioned last year, things have changed year over year. So I can mention that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you have.
I, I have a motion I'd like to put forward regarding this.
All right, can you state your motion, please? Trustee O'Brien?
Yes, it's on the chat. So you can read it while I, you can read it yourselves while I read it.
Could you read it slowly, please? Thank you, because I do not have a chat in front of me.
I will read it. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees give direction to the Director of Education and Secretary.
Yeah, you cut out. We're gonna have to start again.
Yeah, same problem as me.
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees give direction to the Director of Education and Secretary of the Board to present a comprehensive list of salaried positions, who is principal working stations at Catholic Education Center, their roles and responsibilities, along with accompanying salaries. The report will be presented in camera at the May 5th board meeting. Do you need me to read it again?
I will ask Rosie. Rosie, did you get it all?
Copy it from.
From the chat? Okay, we'll read it back to you, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll be sharing her screen with you guys.
I can second that motion if you're asking for a seconder.
Well, let's read it. Not yet. Just give us a moment. Okay, so it's on, has everybody read it? Trustee O'Brien, is it fine the way it reads?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a seconder?
Yes, I will second it.
Seconded by Trustee Carraway. Is there any discussion?
Trustee Agnew, can I speak to it?
Yes, you can speak to it. Thank you.
Okay. Though the survey represent, the survey represents only a small portion of the population, this theme of the board being top-heavy and staff seems to echo throughout the budget survey and last year's survey as well. We need to answer our ratepayers with hard data as opposed to just opinions. We need facts about positions at the board office, their roles and responsibilities, and what they are costing the taxpayer. Perhaps there are some departments that are top-heavy, but perhaps there are some that need more support. But we cannot move forward until we have the hard data that will allow us to make informed decisions to bring about necessary change. It is for this reason that I put this motion forward. It is just to get the information we need.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I would, are you doing?
Trustee Carraway, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm not sure I do, because other people have their hand up, but it was quiet.
So your hand up was, is that a holdover? All right. Trustee O'Hern Zanata, then you have the floor.
There's Murphy first.
Um, I just wanted to, and this is not germane to this particular conversation about the motion, so I'm wondering if we should let those people go ahead of me. I was going to comment on the survey.
Okay, I can, I can go with those that are speaking to the motion. So, Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So to Trustee O'Brien, I think I understand what it is that you're trying to accomplish here, but I'm, I'm challenged with what we are going to do with that information. When I look at things from an efficient, you know, if we're trying to look at an efficiency review, like if that's what we're trying to look at here, I'm not sure that a report from staff outlining positions, responsibilities, and salaries is going to help us at all. I don't think that we're the ones who can make a decision with respect to where there might be inefficiencies or redundancies or whatnot. So I'm just, I'm challenged with sort of some of the details that you're looking for with respect to that report. So I don't know if you want to, if you can speak to that. But I just don't know, what are we supposed to do with this report? Because again, getting a list, getting a comprehensive list of salaried positions, their roles and responsibilities, and their salaries doesn't, that doesn't do anything for us as trustees in making arbitrary decisions if we're trying to consider the possibility of eliminating positions, is what I'm guessing you want to go with this?
So. So, so hang on. So there are people in queue. So it, Trustee Agnew, was that question directed at Trustee O'Brien?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so Trustee O'Brien, you can respond to that question.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Excellent point. My, the spirit behind the motion is to respond to ratepayers regarding a reoccurring theme that seems to come through the budget, budget survey, but I'm really open to any amendments to this motion. Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you're now, is that satisfactory? Trustee Agnew?
I just have a follow-up.
So go ahead, you have the floor.
So again, understanding where you're coming from, Trustee O'Brien, but I'm still not, so I understand the theme has come up. I read through the budget comments as well, and I know that it's a recurring theme again from last year to this year. And I, and I've seen the notations that people have made, wondering about efficiencies and possible redundancies, questioning the number of employees at the board office. But I'm just not sure what this report is going to do to address those concerns other than validate positions that people may hold. It's not going to tell us efficiencies, redundancies.
Hold that thought for a minute. We need to extend. It's 9:59. So can I have a motion to extend first?
Dort.
Trustee Dort, moved by, seconded by?
Me, I'll second it.
Trustee Carraway, all in favor?
Favor.
Oh, let me put it to you this way. Is there anybody that opposes it? Seeing nobody opposes it, so it's unanimous. So let's continue. Sorry, Trustee Agnew.
That's okay. So I just, again, I'm trying to understand what we as a Board of Trustees, regardless of the information, and I'm not dismissing those comments that have come back from our ratepayers. They're extremely important. But we as trustees, what is that report going to do when it tells us, I could go online right now and look up who makes what and what the responsibilities might be. I don't know what that's going to do for us with respect to addressing the concerns that have come forward from those stakeholders. So I don't know if this is the right approach to trying to address that question. It doesn't tell us efficiencies or redundancies or anything if that's what we're trying to get at. if that's what we're trying to get at. Thank you.
Uh, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I would have the following to, I think, I think trustee O'Brien's intention are understood to try to address a common theme that's coming through the, the message. But I'm also to some degree, like trustee Agnew, am wondering as to the usability of the information once we get it. And I'm gonna recommend that maybe what, what we need to do is to contextualize the information so that it is benchmarked against provincial standards or provincial practices for similar positions and identify, identify whether we're in line, we're not in line, and so on and so forth. So I would recommend that we modify the, the, the motion to include that. The other thing that comes to mind, and this, this I'm reminded of the budget of $200,000 that was approved with HR to get a study done with respect to the CEC staff or part of the CEC staff. And I'm wondering, as I'm hearing these discussions, to see where, where we stand on that and whether, whether we can receive an update on it and maybe use it as a benchmark for a basis for starting to compare the data to Mr. Trustee O'Brien is, is asking for. So I think the motion, the spirit of the motion, I understand it. I think the usefulness of the information is warranted, but we need to contextualize so that we can compare it to see where we sit and where we position ourselves as compared to provincial standards, other boards, and so on and so forth. So I'd like for someone to tell me where we're at on that study and whether it, it would be useful in this particular situation.
So we need to stay on topic. So thank you for your question, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand where trustee O'Brien is coming from and the, the information he's looking for. I'm, I'm approaching it somewhat in a different way is often I will have people ask me or, or make the assumptions that this organization, like all large organizations, is top-heavy, whether it's a hospital or whatever, whatever publicly funded organization you, you pick. One of the very first thing people will say is that it's top-heavy. So what I would like is, is the argument and the tools in my tool case to counter that. So, you know, I, I don't know exactly what form it would take, whether it's a, a report or an analysis, whatever the case may be. But I think it would be beneficial for us to have that information and be able to rebut these arguments. And through that process of, of gathering that information, then I think inefficiencies in our organization may arise, but it also will arise where there's a need and maybe where we should be investing more. So what form and how that takes, I'm not sure. I think it's bigger than the motion we're talking about here, but maybe we can get some advice from staff on the spirit of what we're looking for is how do we counter these arguments that, that our organization appears that it's inefficient?
Trustee, Vice Chair Dort, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, I did look through the survey reports and time and again, it has, the same occurrence has been there. And yes, people are asking, our ratepayers are asking about, about what the staff at the CEC. So my concern was, is kind of similar to trustee Agnew, trustee O'Brien, and trustee Murphy saying, yes, we need to be diligent and, and also answer to our ratepayers. The motion as it stands right now is, it asks for a, a list of positions at the CEC. I'm not sure if I'd rather have, or rather care about the salaries. To me, that tells, says nothing. So I'd like to suggest to, to trustee O'Brien to, to take out the word salaries, because it's not gonna give me any information. Okay, and so I think doing our due diligence as trustees and responsible people, I think that's important for us.
Thank you, trustee Dort. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm having a hard time with this motion in the sense that I don't think that, one, we're the group of people to decide, once we're given this information, to decide what to do with it. That's not our area of expertise. If this is something that people want to look at or to go at, I think that third parties are usually the way that that works. Secondly, can I just ask a question? I'm having a hard time scrolling back. I wasn't, how many? What was the percentage of the feedback on the stakeholders on this piece? Cause I thought it was a very small percentage. Can somebody answer that for me? Cause I'm trying to look at it right now. Four percent, four percent. Thank you, trustee O'Herns or nota. So we're, and I'm looking through it, I'm looking through it, all the other items on here that take far more precedence than this. And I'm looking at, you know, outdoor play areas. I'm looking at washrooms consistent throughout all these other areas that have come up. And, and I think that we're putting a lot of weight on something that we're not in a position anyways. That's not our area of expertise. Nor would we be the people, once we have this information, to know what to do with it.
Trustee O'Herns or nota.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Madam Guzzo, that's exactly what I was gonna talk about. We have to temper this, and I thank all eight hundred and sixty parents that submitted their survey results, but four percent overall, especially in the north, I've got twenty-eight people that responded from CTK. That's 1.64%. So I think we need to take this information and temper it. And also a follow-up to trustee Murphy's request, I'm wondering through you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Director Daley. It's almost like we don't know what we're asking for, but we're asking for something. So maybe you could weigh in on, is there something information we need to see that can help us resolve this issue that we've been discussing?
So trustee, before I ask Director Daley to respond, insofar as the percentage, there were 1,101 respondents. So the respond rate is approximately a quarter of one percent. Yours.
Right, I was just referring to him, follow up the parents. I think I'd stated I was talking just about our parents' feedback. But thanks, Mr. Chair.
Director Daley, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I'm a little bit confused as to, again, what, what trustee O'Brien, why he would want the information or what to do with it. I thought I heard him say, he talked about consultants, but now he's talking about salaried employees. So I'm not sure exactly who he's referring to. In terms of staff that are allocated to the CEC, whether they're salaried employees. So for example, on the business side of the building or consultant's itinerance, it's about four percent of our total pay, of our total payroll or total budget. About four percent of the
Two point seven.
Of the, of the budget.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I seconded this motion because I think it's, it's finding information and then we have something to work with. It's data. Sometimes we, we learn things when we, when we get numbers in front of us. I wouldn't take away the, the, I think we should have some money, either, some costs, what, what, what this costs the board. And it, it is our job to address the concerns of taxpayers and, and try and, and propose something by finding out these facts. I think it's always good to work with facts. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all your wonderful feedback. What this comes from is actually the sub-theme in the survey, which Dr. Collmar has quoted. It does say, sub-theme reassess school and board staff positions, including eliminating certain positions that are not deemed necessary. And this did come up last year in the last budget survey. I don't think information, we don't have to do anything with it, but I don't think it's gonna hurt us to know it, knowing full well that we are accountable to our ratepayers as how money is spent. I've got thirteen other comments here that do speak to that. So I think the fact that we are elected to represent how the money is being spent, we should at least know where the money is going. And it's as simple as that. I, um, now, if, I also heard it said that if we want to take out salaries, I, we can amend it to that. But I, I think we should keep them in, only because our ratepayers seem to be saying this, and they did say it last year too.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So just to go back to what trustee O'Herns or nota had said, as well as trustee Guzzo and a couple of my other fellow trustees. You know, I, I agree that we're looking for something here, and I don't disagree with trustee O'Brien, that we want to make sure that we are being responsible to our ratepayers. And obviously, this is something like we said has come up before, but I, I, I'm wondering if this is the right way to obtain useful information. And, you know, we are gonna see as part of the budgeting process what the amount is that is spent on salaries. And I'm sure that there's a further breakdown from there. Again, having, in my opinion, having a list of salaried positions, what the responsibility is and what their role is. I don't know that it's gonna serve the purpose you're looking for. So if we're looking for an efficiency review, or we're looking for something to that end, because that's the only way you're going to be able to address if there is actually redundancies or if there is this top-heavy reality. And that's the only way you're gonna find that. It's not gonna be through getting a list of salaried positions with all, with what they make and what they do. That is not gonna give you the information. Yes, it's gonna tell you how much we spend, but it is not gonna address the question that I believe the ratepayers are asking.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to say that the, the inquiry is valid and, and it is a part and parcel of any budget process. There are inquiries that will come out as a, as a result of the budgetary process of similar nature. My concern is that whatever information is gotten, that it be comparable and that we can reach conclusions against a standard, one way or the other. The comment on, on whether, you know, four percent is, is something that should be acted on, I would offer this, that the survey is just part and parcel of a budgetary process. It is not the end-all on why questions should be asked. And it certainly, the questions that the results of the survey should be considered in the context of the, the bigger picture in a discussion over budget. So I would only comment that if we're gonna proceed with the asking of this information, that we make sure that we receive information that is comparable to provincial standards or what other boards do and how they're organized and so on and so forth. Like that, we can draw appropriate conclusions. So, that's my point.
Okay, so we're going to have two more questions. After that, we'll take it, I'll cut the bait. Dr. Collmar, can you please speak?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo what some of you have already been saying that remember that, you know, there were only, oh, just over a thousand respondents to the survey. So that's definitely not representative of every single stakeholder's position in our board. And then in addition to that, that sub-theme is only representing thirty-seven additional comments. So just be mindful of that when you're considering these comments. Thank you.
Move to Secretary Daley.
Uh, I'm just gonna ask through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Loffs has some, some data that trustee O'Brien was asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just some information that trustee O'Brien was asking for, as Director Daley mentioned. So if you're looking at our consultants and our coordinators and our administrative staff, you're looking at about three, a little bit over three percent of our budget across the entire board, or about four percent of our salary budget. So just to clarify.
Trustee, can I just ask Superintendent Loffs about that information?
Well, you get to speak last. It's your motion, so you're the last person to speak to your motion.
Thank you, trustee.
Tim, you've muted yourself, so you wanna come back on?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. You're, you're the last to speak on your motion.
Okay, so Superintendent Loffs, with that then, can we as trust, do we as trustees decide? Can we decide how many consultants are hired? I know the superintendent's is a formula, but consultant, is that our decision?
The that is, that's an operational type of question. The number of consultants, the number of itinerers that are needed across the board. I, for one, I do not work in that area. I rely on the, the input of the experts in those areas. My, my colleagues, my fellow superintendents to address those type of issues. So I can't really speak to, to that as to how many required was needed. I do respect their knowledge in those areas far more than my knowledge in those areas.
Does that answer your question, trustee O'Brien?
It does. I see other hands up. Am I?
So no, you're the last to speak. I've cut the bait. So you're the last to speak. So do you have any follow-up questions?
I want to thank you for your input. Great ideas. I just wonder what amendment needs to be put to this motion at this point in time.
So are you asking trustees to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so trustees, is there any amendments to trustee O'Brien's motion? So before we go to that, Secretary Daley, can you speak to it, please?
Yeah, sorry. And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Brien, you've mentioned a couple of times consultants. And your motion talks about salaried positions of people who work at the board. So I'm not exactly sure what you're asking for. So the, the payroll clerk is a salaried position at the board. The Director of Education is a sal, like I'm not exactly sure what you're asking for and whether or not what you're asking for is responding to what you think the ratepayers are asking for.
So trustee O'Brien, can I ask a question, a clarifying question? Are you perhaps asking if there is a ministerial guideline, the Ministry of Education, as to how many consultants are allowed for so many pupils?
Yes.
Okay. So then, do you wanna amend your motion?
Okay. I would say we could change salary positions. We could take out whose principal working station is the Catholic Education's Center and just put who are consultants.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
So in brackets, it says, whose principal working station is the Catholic Education Center? And we'll put in the word, who are consultants and coordinators?
To the I'm sorry. Okay, so I, I've got voice. How about if we say something to the effect that are we in keeping with what's required under the Ministry of Education? And then they could probably put together a fairly quick response to see if we're within the guidelines as given by the the guidelines as given by the ministry.
That sounds like a great amendment.
Okay, so do you want to amend or as opposed to reword your motion?
Um, I think we, trustee Antemasi, I think we could put that in as amendment.
Okay, so where would you like that?
How about right after accompanying salaries and put in, to see if they're in keeping with ministry guidelines?
If we're meeting, if H C D S B is meeting ministry guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get that, Rosie?
Sure.
Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to suggest to trustee O'Brien, if you can delete the word accompanying salaries, uh, there, because to me it means nothing and I'm not interested in knowing anybody's salary. So if trustee O'Brien can be kind enough to withdraw, to take out those words accompanying salaries, it's up to him, but it's a friendly request.
Thank you through you, Mr. I'm going to keep that word in, thanks. I think it's important because it seems the survey often asks for salaries and it kind of hints to them. So I want to keep that word in, in respect of our rate payers. Thank you.
Can we, is it possible to remove comprehensive? Because it really speaks to nothing. How about to present a report of listed sal, salaried positions, whose principal working is the Catholic Education System, uh, Education Center?
Yes, well said.
Twice. You've got education twice, Education Center. Outlining the roles and responsibilities. Accompanying, you want to keep the word salaries in there?
Yes, please.
Salaries to determine if H C D S B is within, is in keeping with the ministry guidelines for such positions?
Yes.
And the, the report will be presented in camera at the May 5th. Can we perhaps give them another week? Can that be fulfilled? Secretary Daley?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so we could, so we'll leave, and, uh, 2020, just add the 2020, the year. Regularly scheduled board meeting. Okay, so I have some questions, trustee.
I don't want to keep any camera.
Regularly scheduled in board ca, in-camera board meeting, yes. So we're going to open it up for debate again with the changes. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Can you put it up so I can see it?
It is up.
Peter, you want, maybe you want to turn off your camera too. I can see you. Um,
Can you not see it's on the, on the?
I got it, I got it. I'm reading it.
Okay.
I, good extent. I'm, I'm still challenged with what we're trying to accomplish with this. I am sorry, but I am. This is not going to tell you what you need to know. This is going to tell you a comprehensive list of salaried positions? That's it. That, and the roles and responsibilities, what is that compared to? So let's say that you have a list of salaried positions with their roles and responsibilities. Who are we to determine whether or not those roles and responsibilities, you know, if those positions should be there, shouldn't be there, if they're being paid too much, if they're not? A lot of this stuff is public information. A lot of this stuff, a lot of, you know, there's rules if you want to pertain to the consultants, um, you know, consultants, um, I think their salaries are determined through a collective bargaining process. So I just, I, I don't think you're going about this the right way. This is the information you're trying to get, again, for a small number of stakeholders.
Okay, so, um, we now have, um, trustee DeRosa, um, and Vice Chair Duarte, and then trustee O'Brien, you will have, sorry, and trustee Guzzo. After that, you can wrap it up, trustee O'Brien. Thank you. So trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I always.
I'd like to ask, uh, Superintendent Loft, what the total dollar value is assigned to what we're talking, on an annual basis? What are we talking, what type of a budget are we talking for the C, C E C staff?
You can't, now you can't. Oh, I can see, so. Just plug it into bag. Plug it into bag.
Total budget, what's a total bag?
Uh, trustee DeRosa, would it be sufficient to say what percentage of bag, which is business administrative and governance budget? Does that component?
Yeah, I'll take that information, but it really doesn't, what I'm really after is understanding what the total dollar value is, is. And if it's not appropriate at this point, I will ask the question in, in another context. I would just like to make the point, I would just like to make the point, just, and I will, I will close off on this. This motion, uh, request actually is appropriate because what it does is it provides a benchmark against ministry standards, from which we can draw some form of insight and conclusion on the information being requested. And it's a valid, it's a valid, it's a valid, uh, question that would come up in any budgetary, conversation. So I would support it the way it is right now. Thank you.
Okay, vice, thank you, um, trustee DeRosa. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
So, Mr. Chair, I already spoke to my question, uh, earlier, so I withdraw.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask that you call a vote. There's been no time limit put on this item. We're going into, to things that we've already discussed, people are repeating the same stuff. And there's so many other things that need to be addressed this evening. And I would ask that you, you stop with the questions and the debates in regards to this, unless there's something new, which I haven't heard anything new, uh, and actually you call it to a vote.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, but we were speaking to the changes to the motion, so that had to be done. Trustee O'Brien, you have last word.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And, um, I want to thank you for your input about, um, putting it in guidelines with the ministry that really does, um, make it a standardized, um, formula. And, and again, it's coming out of other comments. I, I've written many down, I won't read you to them, but comments like the board seems to be getting increasingly top heavy, heavy in areas outside curriculum delivery. Does the board office need so many research and communications officers on staff? There's many comments in this survey like that implies previous surveys. With all this input, I, I think it's, it's been amended really well and I, I just encourage you to vote for it. Keep in mind that our, our job as trustees is to be publicly accountable to how every cent is spent. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, um, O'Brien. So we have a seconder. Seconder was trustee Carabella. Okay, so I will now take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Opposed.
Trustee Bambra.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Caratao.
Sorry, opposed.
Trustee Swan.
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Motion carries. You have a, a good motion on the table. Moving on to, um, sorry. Oh, I need a motion to extend. Can I have a mover?
I can move it.
Moved by trustee Carabella, seconded. You're a seconder.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. It will now take a, a vote and has to be unanimous. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Oppose.
Motion dies. So, we're done. Okay, but we need to go back in camera. No, I can't. Yeah, you're right. Sorry, I forgot. Yeah, so we, I need a, a motion to adjourn.
Do what?
Trustee Duarte. Seconded.
DeRosa.
DeRosa, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All right. Helena, could you please lead us in closing prayer?
Yes. Not sure if you received, um, the closing prayer, if Rosie was able to send it out, but if you did, please feel free to join me, or maybe it's too hard if everyone's talking, but, so I will lead it. It's, it's, we had the feast day of the Divine Mercy this past Sunday, so I'm bringing that prayer to our board meeting. I'm just going to, uh, pray the opening of the Divine Mercy Chaplet, the opening, and just then skip to the closing prayer. So, and join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. You, you expired, Jesus, but the source of life gushed forth for souls and the ocean of mercy opened up for the whole world. O font, font of life, unfathomable divine mercy, envelop the whole world and empty yourself out upon us. O blood and water which gushed forth from the heart of Jesus as a fountain of mercy for us, I trust in you. Eternal God, in whom mercy is endless and the treasury of compassion inexhaustible, look kindly upon us and increase your mercy in us, that in difficult moments we might not despair nor become despondent, but with great confidence submit ourselves to your holy will, which is love and mercy itself. Name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you.
Oh my God, I'm so tired.